The mayor asked me to stop in tonight to just go over a couple of things with you. Where we're at in the police department, what our initiatives are, things that we've been doing that you may not be aware of, activities that may be going on. With me tonight is Officer Olivera. She works in our community policing unit. She's gonna go over some of the programs that we do in the community such as Neighborhood Watch, Junior Police Academy, other things for the kids and the schools. So, you know, we do a wide variety of programs away from police work itself. And she's gonna be discussing that. The mayor asked me to go over a few things with you, some of our initiatives, other than the community policing programs that I have to list here. I gave you all a copy of federal and state funding that the police department has received that we apply for. Knowing that budgets are tight and money is not readily available to do everything that we want to do, we do reach out to other areas such as the state and the federal government. We apply for grants. We often get letters and memos and emails from different state members or federal, and they ask us, "Are you interested in applying for grants?" Which we do. We generally try not to let any of them slip by. Some of the grant funding that we received in, we received a ten, uh, I'm sorry, forty-eight-thousand-dollar grant from the federal government under the president's program. With that forty-eight thousand dollars, we bought all new computers for the police cars. We had, our computers in the police cars were over ten years old. They're starting to fail, break down, become unserviceable. So we took that money and we bought all new computers for the police cars, because everything now is done through computers. Years ago, it was paper and pencil and you wrote down your reports and you did everything that way and everything was over the radio. Computers have really become, it's not a thing of the future anymore, it's here now. So we were able to secure forty-eight thousand dollars' worth of computers for the police department. We received forty, forty-nine-hundred dollars from the state and federal government to purchase bulletproof vests for the officers, to issue to them while they're, so they can use them while they're on patrol. That's additional money that does not come out of the borough, our operating expense for the borough. This is money that's released to the police departments from the state and from the federal government, so we've used that money for that. We received over twelve thousand dollars this year for drunk driving enforcement, and we run drunk driving patrols generally on the weekends or any other night where we feel that it's necessary. Officers are paid to do these patrols with this grant. So again, that, no cost to the taxpayer on that. We've also received, with that money, we also purchased equipment for the cars. We purchased radar units that we have in all the police cars now, all the, all our police vehicles are equipped with radar, equipped with computers, cameras, so, and a lot of this, not all of it, but most of it, is bought with grant money. And that's important. We, in two thousand nine, or two thousand ten, I'm sorry, we put in a new nine-one-one emergency phone system. We received, I wanna say, I believe it's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, don't quote me on that, give or take, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar grant that we put towards the nine-one-one phone system. The older system was failing, it needed to be upgraded. We applied for it, we received a grant for that. It's very specific for cellphone calls, where we can actually pinpoint your cellphone call to within so many yards of a specific location, where in the past we weren't able to do that. So it's called the Enhanced Nine-One-One. So we're pleased to have that, that's up and running and that's working. This year, we went to a new computer-aided dispatch system for the police department, makes things, you know, again, our older system was over ten years old, it was time for an upgrade, we upgraded the system. What that does, it makes the police officer's job a little bit easier to do, but it also assists the community when they're calling. Because when you call and we ask for your information, your name, your address, your phone number, we're able to put the information in the system, we're able to, you know, if we need to get back in touch with you, we're able to do that more efficiently. And everything is logged into a computer-based system. So if we were to come to your house for something, and if there's a situation where you need to, sometimes people will call up and say, "Hey, can you put something in the computer because I have a loved one that lives with me that is sick?" Or, for example, we've had some Alzheimer's patients that exited their homes and drifted away. And now we know certain locations that when we're responding, that it comes up when we put the address in. So we're aware of that before we even get to your location. So this makes things a little easier for us, it certainly, it benefits the community. If we know something, it benefits you. And it makes our job a little more, you know, specific to what we're doing. So that's with the new nine-one-one system, that's with the new computer-aided dispatch system. Both systems are up and running, they're functioning, and they're working out very well. So we're very pleased with a lot of the computer upgrades in the last two years. The phone, the nine-one-one phone system upgrade last year are, again, our computer-aided dispatch system this year. We're, we're moving ahead, and that's one thing about policing. You have to try and keep up with the times. Because if we don't, and the federal agencies and state agencies are all moving forward, we need to, we need to be progressing with that. And we are. And we're reaching out for different ways to do it. And, you know, we believe we've been successful and we hope that we were able to pass, you know, what we've gained here onto the community in one way or another. And, you know, we have, the police department has a very good response time. Last year, two thousand and ten, we averaged under, under, under three minutes, actually under two and a half minutes, if you call, that's how long it takes us, that's average response time to get to your house, to your business, to your location. So, again, you know, the police department, the officers are very motivated. We have fine men and women of the police department who come to work every day. And they want to work for you. They enjoy their job, they want to be part of the community, and they want to police in a way that's acceptable to you, mayor and council, and me as the police chief. I run a, I use the word accountability, structure and accountability. And when I took over, it'll be three years this August, that's one of the first things that I brought to the department, the structure and accountability. And the members of the department bought into it. And I can honestly say that the police department is running very well right now. And I hope that it's seen in the community. There's, I'm sure you have some questions, and I have no problem answering your questions. You know, I spoke with the mayor earlier, some people are concerned about car speeding and, and things like that, and loud music, and that's something that generally comes up often, and we do try to tend to your complaints in one way or another. As far as motor vehicle enforcement, we're participating right now, starting today, a two-week click-it-or-ticket program. I'm sure you've seen it on TV, you know, buckle up. That campaign started today, it'll run for two weeks. Officers on patrol, mainly during the day, which is when they can see you're not wearing your seatbelt, are out there enforcing seatbelt violations. Today was the first day, we had a successful day today. We made, wrote several, I can't tell you exactly how many tickets were written today, but I know we did write quite a few. Added that, one person didn't have their seatbelt on and ended up being arrested for drugs. We got a couple drivers on the revoked list, suspended drivers. So it's more than just, you know, you issue a summons and next thing you know their license is suspended. Yeah, you take somebody off the road that shouldn't be driving. And that's all part of public safety. And we'll be doing this for two weeks, this goes to June 5th, so starting today through June 5th, that program's in effect. Certainly doesn't mean we wouldn't be issuing seatbelt summonses any other time, but it's, it's a campaign that's advertised by the state for these two weeks. Just like at around the holidays, the state has a drunk driving campaign, and also generally around Labor Day is the same thing. We receive funding to do those programs as well. Those are just some ideas, those are some of the programs we're working on. We have one other thing that the police department and the council are looking into, our red light enforcement cameras. I don't know if you've heard of those. The state authorizes towns to at least apply for a red light enforcement camera. Some towns, towns around here that have them are Roseau Park, Linden, I know Newark has one. There are other towns that have applied for them. We are in the process of doing that. That, believe, Linden has several, Roseau Park has one. I, I don't know how many Newark has, being that it's a big city. But we feel that we can benefit from that in Roseau. Just basically because signs do get put up at those intersections, just basically warning people, red light photo enforcement. It just makes you more aware, just to slow down. Generally, they go with intersections that are busy intersections, and also they take into consideration how many accidents have been at the intersection and is running or violating the red light and the cause. So it requires a lot of research, we've been looking into it for a little while, and we feel that not, in the not-too-distant future, we may be able to put an application to the state, and the state ultimately makes the decision if we receive the funding for that program. I just also told the mayor, you know, within several hours ago, officers were investigating and discovered what they call a chop shop on one of the streets in town. Stolen cars, stolen automobile engine were discovered. There were people at the location, officers were on patrol, and I believe someone had called in about suspicious activity. So the officers were responding to the suspicious activity and discovered the vehicles and the parts at the location. We discussed this in the past about the police needing cooperation from the community. And this is someone who called and said, "This is what I see." Didn't have to give their name, just gave us the information and the officers responded, and this is what, what they discovered. So it's important that we all work together in the community, in the interest of public safety, quality of life. The officers are here, they wanna work, they wanna respond to your needs, as do I. And, you know, so just, if you see something, call. I think there's an advertisement going on right now. If you see it, call, and New York are doing it because of the, all the terrorism and things. You see a, see a suitcase lying on the ground, they tell you to call. You know, if you see something suspicious or something that's not right within, you know, you don't like the, if there's suspicious activity, kids hanging out on the corner that doesn't, you know, that are disturbing you or disturbing your peace, give us a call and move along. So, you know, we've heard it. And you don't have to give your name. If you don't feel comfortable, you know, just a concerned citizen. And we'll certainly put it in his ad and respond to your needs. That's pretty much a lot of the things that we've been doing in short, you know, that means, but I'd like to turn it over to Officer Olivera. I want her to just go over some of the things about the Neighborhood Watch, some of the things that we're doing in, in the schools with the kids. We have a junior police academy program that we've been doing for fourteen weeks. Fourteen weeks, that's coming to an end this week, Wednesday night, where we've, and I'll let her explain it to you, it's the age groups and the kids and all the things that we've been doing. Again, with this program, we've received money from Union County Prevention Links, and we use that money for the kids and this program. And again, something that the borough certainly benefits from, the police department does, and the community in large does, in addition to the schools and the kids. And I'll let Officer Olivera explain it to you.
I'm Officer Olivera with the Community Policing Unit here in Roseau. Right now, we're coming to end the Community Police Academy, which was a fourteen-week program, and the kids from the high school, Roseau Catholic, and April Haven Park High School, juniors and seniors came here once a week, every Wednesday, from three o'clock to five-thirty. And every week, they went through, basically, when our, they learned about crime scene, crime scene updates, they did motor vehicle stops, they were hands-on on learning how to search a prisoner if they ever were to become an officer, how to do PRT twenty-four, and then they went into a mock trial. And after the mock trial, a senior public defender came down and helped us out. Next week is their graduation. It's gonna be a cost-effective experiment. Another thing that we do with the community policing is Neighborhood Watch. Neighborhood Watch, it's basically, you guys are our eyes and ears for the police department. It's basically a program that established a network of concerned citizens to communicate with their neighbors and police regarding their related problems. So like Chief was saying about burglaries in your house and stuff, you guys tell us what's going on, your concerns, and we're able to, to act on it. Right now, currently, we have three active Neighborhood Watch programs here in Roseau. The most recent one is from Shaker Avenue. We also do home security checks, which are suggestions that we give homeowners on how to prevent burglaries. Also, we're coming, we're wrapping up an ADEAR program, and I'll be more in fifth grade, which our graduation is keeping in June. And we're currently doing career days in the school, the full school, Washington School, Little Day School, they're all coming up, so we are also doing career days. And the last thing that I did was Saturday, which I participated in the anti-violence workshop here at the high school, and it was Saturday from the tiny level graders.
So that's what we have to bring to you. Now, I'm sure you may have some questions for us, if you do, certainly wouldn't mind answering them, if anyone has anything.
Just real quickly, about the home on Christie Angus that's owned by SCAU?
Yes.
Have y'all confirmed that there are juveniles that are in the court system there?
Would they, we contacted Community Access. Would they are, would they consider at-risk youth? Now that, they have not entered the juvenile system yet. But what they're doing is, at-risk youth could be anywhere from DIFIS cases to people who have been in trouble with the police and maybe have not yet reached the juvenile courts. I have a concern with it, I know the mayor has a concern with it, Public Safety Council in Eves has a concern with it. I did make some phone calls, they did send us some paperwork on it, and how they're, what they're doing is they're bringing the kids to this location because the location they were using in Elizabeth, we were told, there was a fire. And they don't have the facility now to house the juveniles. What they're doing is, they're making the necessary repairs, and they believe that facility will open up again in July. And that, and they filed that up with a letter to us stating that, and that's where we are with that at this time. So, but we did make an attempt to do some research. It did catch us, and I called and said, "This should've been brought to my attention as well as the mayor and council's attention prior to you doing this." Myself as a police chief certainly have a concern with it, because I need to know if we have residents in town that are housing at-risk youth. Because if I know, then I put a memo out, and then my officers know. And then we're, when we're responding for whatever the reason may be, at least we're aware. So I made that clear, they understood. Actually apologized for not letting us know in advance, so at least they took some responsibility in that aspect. And I believe we're following up through zoning codes and everything, you know, as far as what can we have there or not.
Since you have a concern, do you think there is also a concern that needs to be told to the neighbors that are there on that street? And has that happened?
No, it has not happened yet. I know the mayor was out, and he met with some of the residents out there, trying to figure out a way to make the notification legally. So that's something we are researching.
Also, do we know the age range of these children?
I believe it's under eighteen.
Do we know, junior high or high school?
Yeah, in, in that area, yes.
I, I have an issue, but I live right across the street from them, and they bring those youth, they bring the handcuffs. I saw them take them out of the car with handcuffs.
Okay.
So if, if they got handcuffs to the car...
Right.
The neighborhood has to be aware of this.
And again, I, I don't disagree with you. I'm passing along the information that was given to me, that's why I insisted on getting some notification from Community Access. And now that we have it, certainly researching it as far as notifications to the immediate area. So we are researching, just as...
They're pretending they're high risk. The people that are watching them, I come home sometimes, they, they got their basketballs going down the streets of the park.
Yeah.
And we have neighborhood kids over there, and they, they have these kids, we don't want our kids to be in that park. And something happened, it was last night, one o'clock in the morning, four pop cars was out there. And this has been going on for the last couple of weeks.
And I'm aware of that, and again, we're just trying to do this the right way. And I'm glad that you're bringing it to my attention, and we'll certainly try to expedite anything that we're already researching. Because we have been in touch with our legal counsel here in Roseau as well. So we're not taking a step back and taking a, let's see and wait approach, we're being proactive, and we're trying to get more answers from Community Access and the county itself.
Who puts in charge of this? Who residents?
It's, it belongs to Community Access.
Well, the fund is the money for the grants that you guys are getting in, is it a direct response to optick imprisonment out of my help?
The grants? No, no, not at all, no. The grants, the money we receive, realistically, we receive a lot of this every year. And it's something that the community doesn't know about, I want to make you aware. We receive money for drunk driving enforcement every year. We receive what they consider the Edward Byrne Grant, it used to be called the Motor Enforcement Block Grant, they just changed the name. We receive some money from that every year. And that's money that goes to the police department, and we can pretty much use for whatever we feel necessary as far as what we need. You know, it, it's not always a lot of money, twelve, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, but it's something, you know, and we'll put it towards a vehicle that, you know, we need to purchase, or any other equipment that we need to purchase. And the vest fund, that comes from the state and the federal government. And that comes from motor vehicle violations, for every motor vehicle violation that's issued, a portion of that money goes into a vest fund, and they give that back to the police department.
It's kinda scary, and I have the impression that, that...
Yeah.
More dangerous now where our police officers have to have bulletproof vests.
Yeah, well...
Even in a police officer's, that's good, that's superior, but as a citizen, it's kind of scary.
Right, yeah. And, and realistically, again, anytime an officer hires somebody, they get issued vests for their own protection. Hopefully, it'll, it'll never come into where they need it, but it's there, it's a, it becomes more of a, when the officers wear it, like a, they feel comfortable, not least they have it, they're wearing it. It has saved so many lives, not in Roseau necessarily, but throughout the United States, that your officers have been, you know, shot in line of duty, and the vest fortunately protected them, it's taken.
Is the, the red light cameras, is that a more of a, a revenue-raising project more than a safety project?
Well, it's, it does raise revenue, and, and it does lead into traffic safety. So you can look at it both ways.
What street do you think it's called?
That right now is they're researching the streets. We just can't put it up at any location, that's why they're doing all the research as far as the intersections, traffic volume, accidents, summonses that have been issued, that all plays a role in deciding where the location's gonna be. So right now, I can't tell you the specific location.
Hi Chief.
Hello.
We're approaching the summer months, and there's gonna be a number of quality of life issues that we're going to have to address. Can you just be clear on a couple of things, like what constitutes loitering? Is it a group of individuals that you ask to move from one corner, and then they move a block down? Is it loitering on a public corner? Is it loitering when it's a group of individuals sitting on a stoop, and they may not live there? You know...
I'm sorry.
Also, we have, you know, we have a lot of, especially in the second ward, we have a lot of multifamily dwellings, and we have several houses where people just hang outside, just hang on the porch, hang in the street, you know, and some neighbors complain, and then they call the police, call the police, call the police. The police will come down, you know, there'll be a police presence there, they won't ask them to leave, but, you know, maybe they'll just tell them, "You're making too much noise" and what have you. And then as soon as the police leave, they come back. So how do we address it?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, we've been doing our quality of life initiative for the last, this will be the third summer now. That'll be started off, the weather's starting to get warmer, school's gonna be letting out, so we will put our quality of life initiative into effect again this summer. And that requires, you know, more parking lots, walking posts, quality of life, like Councilwoman Ternish had said, people congregating. It's a very fine line as far as loitering, loitering, people use the word loitering. However, you are allowed constitutionally to congregate...
Assemble.
Assemble, yes. It's what you do while you're there determines does it require police action, does it require us coming down and asking you to move location, where are you? Are you on your own property? Well, I'm on my own property, okay, then we're asking you to keep it down. They have all their friends there. A lot of times when we say, "Look, you know, if you don't live here, it's getting late, you need to, you know, want to go home or just, you know, move on." Many times they do, but yeah, do they come back? At times they come back as well. And it's just keeping on top and maintaining, you know, constant drive-bys, keeping an eye on the groups before any problems. So far, you know, with, you know, it is May, I would say with the warm weather here, but, you know, we're far from that at the moment, with all this rain. We've been trying to start getting into that, you know, patrol mode as far as what we're doing with the people hanging out. And so far, so good, but again, the weather hasn't really cleared up. And we anticipate, once it does and the weather gets warmer, that activity will increase. And again, if you see something, you know, please call us. And yes, people do have a right to assemble, it's just how they go about. And, you know, the officers are, they're doing their best to try to keep an eye on things and move along as best they can. But I appreciate, you know, you bringing that up, and again, we will... But I appreciate, you know, you bringing that up, and, uh, again, we will, we will be paying attention to that, especially with the summer approaching. Hopefully, the weather will change and we'll get some more weather. Yes?
Yeah, Chief, uh, also, I have a question, uh, because some of the, uh, because some of us come around the high school, we tried to say, and with, uh, some of the, you know, people that hang out, or I mean, back in, they had, you know, patrol ones walking around, patrol ones, and just to get, you know, get the note from some of the neighbors. Are we going to have that?
Yes, we, you know, again, we're going to pick up our, what we call parking walks, where the officers, you know, they're assigned to a car, but they're required to do parking walks during their shifts. Now, they, they do them throughout the day, but more so with the summertime coming into the evening. Last year, we had walking posts throughout the whole summer, where the officers, they stop, they park, they get out of their vehicle, and they walk. And believe it or not, last summer was very successful. Uh, we had a very good summer last year, not a lot of activity that would be a big concern. Prior to the summer, last winter, going into the summer, we had a series of random shootings, uh, that were going on, it started last, around last Thanksgiving, not this past one, the year before. And that led up through the winter and just into the summer. We made several arrests regarding those shootings, and that seemed to calm things down. So, we took a lot of pride in following up and investigating on that. And that was a team effort by the patrol division, the detective bureau, uh, following up and quelling the activity. And several arrests were made, and the people who were involved are now in jail, awaiting trial. So things, that did help and did calm things down, and we're hoping that this summer, uh, will continue as we had last summer. So, we, you know, we, we're out there, and hopefully, things will all work out.
I think it has to, I'm sorry, I think it has to be a balance too, because I know you guys are out there, um, but it has to be a balance between the enforcement and knowing the neighborhood. Um, I love all my neighbors, you know, I know them all, love them all, the ones that sit on the porch day and night, and the ones that are across the street that complain all the time. You know, and the only thing that I can advise the complaining ones is to please call the police. I may, you know, I may be, this situation's aware, but we all have to live peacefully in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Um, one thing that kind of disturbs me that I have seen, and I hope that it's not a trend, um, I've, and I've witnessed this on my block, uh, where there was a discussion, a loud discussion between some people. So they decided to walk off in their directions or whatever, and I know that there was a police officer observing the discussion, um, because he rode around and then he came back again. And then all of a sudden, um, they had like six cars on the block, and they were blocking all over the place, um, and they didn't take anybody, they just asked, and I was directly there, what was, you know, what are you arguing about? What was the discussion about? Then we had, you know, everybody milling around, and I can see if you need to secure an area because it's an investigation, or you suspect something, or what have you, but this has become all to a pound. Then when you block traffic and people have to turn around in people's driveway and go the opposite way, that happens. I mean, just move the car over to the side, you know, or what have you, not to obstruct the flow of traffic, or that people can just go along, you know, um, and it's just that well. You know, I can't tell you what police procedures are, but I can tell you what I witnessed. You know, and it's, it's not, it's not a good thing, it, you know, um, it makes people feel a little apprehensive, you know, about the policing in the community.
Right, okay, appreciate it.
Chief, I live, uh, my name is Gary Pondre, I live at three Douglas Road, and my house is broken into in February, and I was not happy with how lightly the police took that event. Um, the officer responded very quickly. Um, it was, I got home that night at eleven-thirty, I tend to work very long hours, and, um, whoever the perpetrator was, I was worried, because my hour is not pretty. I mean, some days early, I come back in the middle of the day for lunch, it's hard to tell when I'm going to come and go, okay? So that person had to watch me, figure out why they were breaking into my house. So it had to be someone I believe in the neighborhood. Um, the officer came very quickly, you know, checked the facility, made sure we were safe and everything. However, there was no fingerprint thing, and I'm being told this is common mobile procedure. In a small town like ours, I would see why not? Why not take fingerprints? Um, this gentleman pushed my window up from the back. I hadn't been back in months, the only fingerprint that's going to be on our window is his. He pushed it up, okay? As a matter of fact, you could actually see him, okay? Um, he went through my dresser drawers. His fingerprints would have been all over my house. Now, that perpetrator could be someone who's already in the, already in the system, and you probably would have been going like that, possibly, okay? By that fingerprinting, you leave him out there to possibly walk in unsummoned. And this is what I was worried about, okay? That that perpetrator would break into my house while my wife is there. Or, actually, the perpetrator went through my front door, and what, what we think happened is my neighbor's kid came over, okay? Pulled up in his car, he heard the car, and ran through the front door. So, that could have been me pulling up, right? Walking in, and then the guy's running out, and he has to stab me and shoot me because now I'm on the scene. So, I'm just thinking it's a good procedural thing to possibly look at fingerprinting when these things happen, because you might be able to get perpetrator off the street and prevent him from breaking into the next house where the owner walks in on him, or somebody's there. So that's just my experience. And the officer did respond very quickly to Detective, they all followed up, and I appreciate their professionalism, but that one procedural...
Well, I still look into that. I, I can't comment on the investigation, but if you call me tomorrow...
I found out from my insurance company that it is typical. I was surprised, I asked my insurance company, do the police still only fingerprint? And they said no. I was very surprised.
I'm sorry, what street did you say you were on?
I live on Douglas.
It, it all, it all depends, if you give me a call tomorrow, your name again, then I'll follow up Detective. This was February?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, uh, I gave my card and phone number.
Can you talk about fingerprint, is that normal?
It, it, again, it, it all depends. It is, uh, it depends on, do the officers see anything, uh, any fingerprints that are visible? Uh, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. If they see something that is, they may, uh, take the item with them, bring it in here to fingerprint. Sometimes they'll do it at the scene, but again, it, it's case by case. It, it's, it's not always automatic, it's based on what evidence, uh, is at the scene, is there evidence of fingerprints at the scene? Uh, so again, yeah, I hate to, again, but it is case by case. Some cases, investigations, we were able to lift fingerprints, and it was successful. Some, they weren't. A lot of times with fingerprints, when you're fingerprinting something, uh, if it's a common object, a lamp, light, a door, there can be a lot of fingerprints on that. So, a lot of times, they'll print it, and it will, we'll send it out, but it won't come back. And you have to be in the system for it to match up. You take the fingerprints and you send them out to the state police, and the state police will send them back, no match, uh, and, and a lot of times, that does happen. But your fingerprints have to be in the system for there to be a match. And many people, their fingerprints are not in the system. Unless you are in law enforcement cases, they've been previously arrested, and where your fingerprints are on file. But again, you know, a lot of it is case by case basis, and what is visible or noticeable at the scene. But we'll look at that.
Chief, can you please give the resident the local directory to call you?
Yeah, you can call, uh, well, the main number here is two-four-five-two-thousand. Our detective bureau is two-four-five-nine-two-hundred. Uh, they are the ones who generally follow up on the burglaries, and me, I'm two-five-nine four-thousand, is my direct number. Uh, if you call me, uh, basically, put you in touch with who you need to speak to regarding if it's something specific. But I'd be more than happy to take your call as well. And if I'm not in my office, if I have a voicemail, leave me a voicemail, and, and return your call as soon as I can. Anything else?
Uh, the officer next to you said you guys were finishing up on the program next week to deal with the kids in the, uh, high school.
In the school, yes.
Right. Uh, as far as, uh, here, do you guys have some interns for the kids or volunteer, you know?
Uh...
Reasonably, there's, there's some jobs for the kids, I have a daughter who, that is, it's becoming hard, and McDonald's jobs are not there for the number of families there. So, you know, are you guys allowing any volunteers or...
No, generally, the interns that we do, would come from, uh, we do get it from King College, because it's part of their curriculum that they need to intern somewhere. So sometimes they'll call us and say, can I intern for four weeks? It's part of their curriculum, it's something that they have to do. We have taken on interns in the, in the past for the summer or on school break. Uh, we, we don't, uh, we give them some, what's it called, records-keeping type things to do. We do have to do background checks on anybody who does any work for us, so we ask them, you have to submit all their names or information, we just do background checks on them, and if, if it works out, then we usually take, and we don't, we usually generally take one at a time. Uh, but we don't have any programs for like the younger kids, no.
No.
Uh, I live on Sherman Avenue, Roselle. I've been at fourteen and eight. This house in front of me is, uh, three thirteen. And the house in the back, they don't play, that I have a problem. It was three seventeen. The one on three on Sherman Avenue, it's been vacant since I gave some of them there. Every summer, Lucius or son grows up, and there's mice and rats coming out of the house. I have complained to the health department. They get on the man, the man come up, did a little killing of me, I don't know what he did. Uh, the one in the back of me, this first time I've complained about him, it was three thirteen. Um, we have, he has a pool there, and he never opens it up, he's still, I guess, last of the number, and the water stays on its top, and there's birds, I saw birds from the island. These are, these are actually birds from how my son says, my mom loves the birds from the island. Does the wrong lady stand up and pick my face? And I don't know, there's other bugs coming into the house, I, I, I don't know. What can I do?
Uh, if you, if you want to call me tomorrow, then I'll give your name and information to the appropriate, uh, agency, borough, have a bookie to that.
Would there be...
I should take a minute, we'll, we'll, we'll...
Would there be a health department?
It, it would, it would be, uh, helpful.
Yeah, he was, he was, went to be here this evening, but he had a family situation to deal with, so he could not make it. But I will follow up on it. Now, are there any other questions for the Chief, any public safety issues, police issues, while we have the Chief here?
Okay. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.